Hang on, please.
In front of the director of worship, Benjamin Roddick. Somebody. Copy of your afternoon, September sixteenth twenty second, we're not reading, have been posted on the city website. One copy of committee reports have been posted on the city website. We had a brief presentation after the request of. Of. You know, of Captain Melner. From Officer, retired Officer Thomas, who would like to give a brief presentation about canine Sergeant Philly. Oh, there we. Sheriff.
It's good, everybody here? Thanks. This is Sergeant Philly. Named after Chris Philly, Sergeant Chris Philly, who died in our police department. One twelve of twenty four. Okay, I had. Is there any people pass this around? I have.
Dog creatures?
No. They're they're all off, there we go. So. Thank. Uh, he's been training. Since Mark and Sarah. For everything, including that's on the certificates here. Uh, she's now ending her training in explosives. Uh, she got three more sense to uh. Get into her brain. And then she's pretty well done. Um, when I I'm here for, I've never did this before, I've trained seven other dogs, Sheriff, for state police. And this is the first time I've ever been here with a dog that I trained in front of the council. So that's pretty. Um, she's a nonviolent dog. No aggression at all. She uh, she's attracted for human scent. W service for human scent. She's archifying for guns, whatever the person throws away. She um. Obedient, let's put it that way, okay? Um, she is trained to work in a courthouse. For children to have to testify. And for everything, everybody else that's scared to be in here, she's training to lay ready next to them to stay with them the whole entire time. She came from Tennessee out of a humane society. Um, uh, I want to get this right, so I say it right. The family of the Lindigan family of the city of Hudson donated her to be trained for the Hudson Police Department. And um. That's that's basically why I'm here. Because um, I want her to get into the police department so we can pick a handler out because after a while. If I keep handling her training, she's just going to want me to do it. So I have to have a handler in the police department picked out to handle her. Um, other than that, that's Sergeant Philly that represents Officer Philly. And uh, the family wanted, the Philly family wanted it done. So they asked me, I went and did it. Everything's for free, plus a vehicle to go to the city of Hudson Police Department. That's why I'm here.
Um. Well, thank you. Any questions, Chief Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. I, you know, it's very generous. But um, we're involved in the budget season now.
Yeah.
So when you say everything's free, what do you talk?
Anything that you pay for is the food of veterinarian bills for Sergeant Ray Philly.
And the training?
No, training is free.
No, no, down going training for the handler, right?
The handler is free too.
Free, what do you mean?
I will do that for free. To train the handler because nobody else can train him but me. So this is zero cost other than the maintenance of this animal right here. That's it. That's why I'm doing it for my buddy Chris Philly.
Thank you.
I trained Chris Philly before I left for the federal government.
I, you know how it is about dogs.
Oh, I'm.
So what I I I wear a different hat here as the purse.
Absolutely.
And the. It's not just us, right? It's HPD, the chief, you know, all, how how is that conversation going? With the chief and and their receptive to taking on a budget burden for for the additional. Um, what do you, what do you say vehicle? What kind of vehicle? A new vehicle? What kind of vehicle are we talking about? I know when we got rigs, we had to get, you know, respectful. Vehicle and um, you know, training down in Florida, so that training doesn't have to be done ongoing, it should.
It's the training from me, but then they have to train once a month, according to the state in New York.
So so we have to spend training for overtime for the officer, right, to train, right? We also have to see then.
They have to do it anyway. Right?
Why would they have to do it?
Because the state mandates it.
Not not if they don't have a dog, right? I'm saying the officer to handle, right? The, there's going to be extra cost. You know, and the reason I say this, Johnny, is is that, you know, we we just had hit a couple of weeks ago or a month ago with, you know, an additional cost. For most services from the rest of the world, that that's going to really hit our customers, right? So though this is a great. Idea and and I I love it, you know, and, you know, maybe I want to put my back here, but uh, you know, it's 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 definitely therapeutic. I seen the rates, benefit of rates. But you're talking explosive explosive dolls, finding guns, you know, is this a need of the department that we have at this time? It's just the the train or this is this is where we're going with the department, having to.
I discussed it with the chief and the chief and the mayor and the commissioner, who I guess resigned. And um, they said that I would have to do everything and then. Present myself in front of the council. And I guess if the council deems that is a good idea, fine, but once rigs is on vacation, you have no dog here. Okay?
Yeah, but but I'm, but realistically, the council is the person, right? The council's not the, we don't run each year.
No, well, then.
Right, so this is definitely a department thing where, you know, if we, it's a budget, handle it, if if there's a budget, you know, for it. If it's, you know, because we got to think three years, right, with with the expense of of a dog. Uh, and ongoing, that deals ongoing expenses. Because you you know, you know, it's very expensive, you've been there. Oh, 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 wait, come here. Okay, you know what, you're good. Aw, you, all right.
Oh, I can keep now. No, it's, I see where you're coming from. But you, and literally in a department, you have to have two dogs. One does one thing for drugs and whatever, the other one does the other thing for explosives. For explosives and whatever.
Yes.
You said the requirement, you have to have two dogs, that's just, well, your dog, one dog's going to go on vacation. You're not going to have. It's just required. Well, it's always been required for.
That was about, that was tongue.
It's already been required since I've been doing dogs for forty years. You have, if you have one dog. You have zero dogs when they're not around. This will confiscate. One dog on vacation, one dog is here. And dog food. And dog food, veterinarian costs, that. And dog food, veterinarian costs. I had four dogs working at one time in the city of Hudson. One in the schools. For in top, for drugs, for their program. Two on patrol. And when they went on vacation, the other one substituted.
So the difference is about you're volunteering to do this for free in honor of the police officers.
That's my, yes, that's why I did.
So saying we're saving by doing it.
Everything's for free, plus I'm.
Yeah.
Giving you a vehicle.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I, I had a question.
Okay.
About two.
Yes.
So like I'm looking at all of these trainings and it was my understanding that. Uh, some training is not compatible with other training, so if you have a a dog that's a therapy dog, for example, you're not necessarily going to want that dog to also be an explosive dog.
Yeah, they can be.
So what, so the question is, what role do you specify this dog to?
Whatever role we tell him to do. He's.
She's trained.
She's all trained. I'm just adding the explosives, in case you ever need it here, you have four locations in the city of Hudson that's deemed under homeland security. As very critical. You have no bomb dog here to make sure nothing happens.
What type of locations?
Well, you you would have to go through the department and ask them.
Well, I know, we would get state police. We would get state police.
Uh, what's the plan?
No, I was just saying, if we needed something ahead of time, we would have, you know, between our grades, between all that stuff, that's that's already predetermined, you know.
Okay, since we don't have to make any kind of decision.
Oh, yeah.
Can I just ask one more question? Yeah, sorry, just one other thing. Um, I have. When Chief Franklin comes back from leave, I'd really like to get her take on her position with regard to the dog.
Okay.
And I think she did not, I don't, I don't think she asked you to come here, did she?
No, um.
No, I did not. I did not, I I.
Please mention it.
They asked on behalf of the Fisher Bowery, yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, we have communications, you can see that. Uh, planning board from the Veterans Day communities. And HPD. Let's get to our reports. Do you want the chiefs here, Nick?
Yeah, probably.
Oh, oh, you're going to do fire with that uniform?
Um. Fire report for the log we had thirty calls for the month of September. Um. Uh, one water incident. Two accidents, carbon dioxide incident. Two standbys and twenty four false alarms. Or unintentional, they were all false, they were set on heating cooking or something like that. You know, fire, and then also as though yesterday, our engine rescue has been sold, the old one. Uh, the new owners picked it up and took it to their home in Tacon. Um, so that's gone and wait our new one, which should be here in June or July.
Did you say Tacon?
Yes.
Was that in harm's way to transaction? I guess no one gets that, never mind. February is, it's almost there, it's in the fifties. Anyway, moving right on, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, any questions? Republic?
Yeah, how much did you get for the V S? How much did you get?
Uh, I don't remember off the top of my head, it was approved by the council. Um, a lot of that. The master go before it's the purpose of the new mill, yep.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Uh, Calvin, you want to give us our least president energy, please?
Right, hello, good evening, Mr. Counselor. Uh, so I'm here reporting on behalf of the Department of Youth. Uh, September came and went pretty out pretty quickly, but it was filled with fun and excitement. Uh, before you hear, you have a breakdown of our sessions, we broke the year into four sessions. Um, our our goal with that was to be more intentional with the programming and increase registration across all three programs. We have K through second, third through eighth, and our team program, and we know certainly uh. In increasing registration across all three groups, but again, that's an overview of those sessions as we make our way through the year. Um, well, on the next slide, uh, September, we also, it was kind of a bittersweet moment. We had the onboarding of our new um, Youth Commissioner Sonia Okun. Uh, but that also meant the departure of Maya Reed, that's been with the department for more than, I hope, must say roughly five years now, so. Um, you know, bittersweet, Maya has been a tremendous advocate for the department. Sonia um, has gracefully taken the baton and will continue to to do that work with us. Um, on the next slide here, uh, to the left, you have Elaine, she was our student of the month. Um, this is Elaine's first year in program with us, and she's just been a really tremendous kid, anytime she shows up, he lights up a room. Um, she's probably, I shouldn't say, she's probably one of my favorite, favorite kids as well. Um, she's in our third through eighth group, and she's just always eager to join in programming that we have, she's very kind and respectful to the staff. She's a joy with her peers, and so Elaine was our student of the month. Um, and next, next to Elaine, you have Kayla, Kayla Hopwood. Um, I often call her Kayla Hopewood because she is kind of the 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 next generation of the youth department. Uh, she's a kid that came in very shy, very timid, very reserved, and since then, she's very confident. Uh, she's established herself as one of the young leaders at the department, and she's she's actually quite funny. Um, and she's always willing to engage and support her youth. Uh, so Kayla Hopwood was our staff of the month for September.
Sounds like a young cow, but I knew what to call.
Ah, so you're all listening. Now, yeah, Kayla, she's really great, um, she actually had a sibling Lance, who is now, he's going off to Leontes. Um, and he was interning with Lance Wheeler formerly, so generations come through the department, and we always look to continue those trends as well. Um, I have some numbers here for you, you know, again, the general gist is that enrollment started off slow, it's uh, it's still increasing. But our numbers are going up week by week. Uh, for our K through second program, we started out with about only thirteen kids registered, bumped that up to twenty one. Uh, in our third through eighth program, we started out with about sixteen kids registered, and we've now bumped that up to fifty one. And then team programming, uh, we didn't have any kids who who signed up, imagine being a teenager, you know, you feel like you can do what you need to do. Um, however, we still need parental consent, um, and through the uh, through the work of our team staff, they were able to get. Uh, twenty three kids signed up in a relatively short amount of time. Um, the newer uh, stat there is the ridership numbers. We now have busing that's being covered by the county, they help us get our kids home. Uh, week by week, you can, you can kind of see the numbers there, week one, we gave ninety six kids a ride, week two was ninety eight. Week three was eighty eight, could have been drop off, but in total for the month, we gave two hundred and eighty two rides. Um, uh, this here is uh, um, Josiah and inside, they're actually siblings, again, just kind of speaking to that legacy that we have at the department. Uh, we hire students ages fourteen to eighteen to gain, you know, job training and, you know, learning what it's for, needs to become a professional. We also have our internship program this year that is also in collaboration with the county. Again, with a similar uh, similar goal of training up our young folks in our community. We see it as a win-win for those interns to develop kind of those soft skills and the foundation of being a successful youth worker. Um, here, this is just a snapshot of um, our message board. It's um, it's our welcoming board to the students, lets them know what to expect, not only for the day, but for the week. Any upcoming field trips or events that we may have going on in the community. Um, it's a really artsy, interactive way to engage with the kids, we often have a riddle on the board as well. Um, and yeah, they always, they kind of just look forward to those updates on that message board. Um, here is our K through second uh, programming. A lot of this, we, I mentioned that last month's meeting, and this is just kind of follow up on those programs. So we can go to the next slide, and this is a listing of the programming for our third through eighth uh, uh, group as well, and then. Going to the next slide, we have some of the photos from those workshops, this is hip hop. This was on a class that we weren't sure we were going to be able to make happen, but we're very fortunate enough to make it happen. Uh, Lindsay makes her way to Hudson coming from Malaysia to do a hip hop dance program with our youth. And it's really been a success, especially amongst amongst our young girls. Uh, here we have Joan, Joan is with us through the high school of Columbia. She does a variety of art activities with our youth, and this is a continued program that we've been doing for roughly, uh, much in three years now. Here we have drumming, uh, it's paired with the literacy component, Elena Mo, Elena Mosley spearheads this initiative. Um, they're either at the youth center or we find space at Hudson Hall, again, that's just an example of some of the collaborations that we do with other organizations. Where we continue to work with the English, uh, after school circus, they are, um, you know, a favorite in the community. Uh, and I I think I would say the capstone for some of our kids is learning these skill sets with circus and then being able to showcase them in the community. At the different events that you might see them at. And some more photos here, circus. And so this is our K through second uh, programming. Um, again, they are at the library on the second floor, this is Juliana, she comes in uh, once a month to do a literacy program uh, with our youth. As you can see, I think uh, sometime the instructors probably have more fun than than our youth. Uh, but this, this was a story about the uh, the rainbow fish, so again, a literacy activity component there. Some more photos. This is um, this is an interesting photo, uh, so these portraits were done roughly twenty, twenty five years ago, they've been showcased at Spark more recently. And some of our K through second kids, they were able to identify people in these portraits. Which again, I think it speaks to the camaraderie, community, the legacy that we kind of uphold at the department. And it's, you know, it's very fun to kind of play the name game on like, oh, you know, do you know this person, do you know that person? Uh, this is uh, Mr. Ray, he um, he does a literacy activity component with our youth as well. Uh, the story here was the uh, watch V and the sea, um, and so that was paired with a fun, kind of messy activity as well. And so I think that's in upcoming, upcoming photos here, yeah. Those are just some additional photos at the library. Which that transition has has really gone really well, no, no issues there. Uh, so this is just some messaging from Mr. Terron Hetch, he. He spearheads our third to eighth program, and this is just pretty, pretty much an overview of the uh, program highlights, some of the activities they employ playing. Uh, we're also in uh, now October, setting up the, this place to be decorative, to reflect um, the the fall season. And then our team programming, this is some messaging from uh, Jay Sean and Kay and True. Uh, True is our team programming supervisor, and essentially, you know, he's reporting that our teams enjoy just having a space that they can call their own. It's a safe haven for them, a lot of the athletes come, get some gym time, it's also a social opportunity and a lot of, lot of gameplay that takes place as well. We also um, attended some events in the community this past month. One, one was uh, the meet the teacher night on September twenty fourth, and we also attended uh, homecoming. Uh, which I believe is in the next, oh, sorry, I have a little bit. Um, uh, we also attended a homecoming, which I'll make corrections to next. And above this next slide, next moment, um, I need to report more detail on this at the next meeting. But just wanted to mention that this past Sunday, there was the uh, barbecue fundraiser at Oakdale. I think it went really, really well, uh, it was a strong turnout, uh, good music, food, uh, there was a bonfire. Uh, really, really great exposure to Oakdale and what it can be, and so we're really looking to see how we can continue this momentum. This is uh, this is uh, some of the staff attending the homecoming game where Keith Robinson was uh, chosen by his peers. As the uh, homecoming king, uh, we kind of see Keith as one of our own, he does a lot of refereeing. And coping with us, whether it be soccer or basketball, we're also about to take a picture with the Blue Hawk. Who is also a former employee on that Oakdale camp with us, guys, you know. Uh, these are just uh, reporting back on our soccer league, which uh, next, uh, this Saturday is our final day of soccer. Um, that has gone on for the past six weeks, it's really been a tremendous success. Uh, not only um, because of the numbers, but just the involvement and engagement from volunteers, coaches, parents. Um, it's it's really a a community effort. Then some more photos there. And just, you know, just a look ahead, um, so we are wrapping up Y B B L. Our Y D S L, and we are gearing up for youth basketball, Y B B L, and so those registrations are available on our website. And again, we're always looking to involve volunteers who want to support sports or just in general at the department. Um, October twenty first, there is a Hudson Youth Town Hall taking place at the library from five thirty to eight. Um, essentially, the theme is to, uh, it's a, it's a potluck meeting, so we intend to feed people. Uh, but essentially, it's an opportunity to have a discussion about our youth in Hudson and what we want their future to look. And then on fifteenth of November, we are hosting our Harvest Festival as well as a youth center open house. Uh, we didn't want to um, compete with the school that is having their kind of open house this week, and so we shifted, we shifted ours to November fifteenth. Um, and I'll be sure to send. Um, and I'll be sure to send more details and invites to the council. And you know, again, these are our um, ways of contacting us, whether it be social media or on our website. And that does conclude the youth center.
Thank you, Calvin. Any questions, youth council members?
Is Tuesday going to be videotaped? We have a formal meeting of times in videotaping or anything, so we can see that works?
I think we can make it happen. Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Just to see what, you know, what, what they have to say.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We can make that happen.
Very good.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thanks.
Next up, Captain Norrie.
I don't mean to thank you for buying my pass, so if you meant to that, I'll put this up. I'm gonna use your space again.
Long as you don't leave me like a doggy, Robert.
I don't like any guarantees. So I'm just gonna share the uh, reports for September for the police department, our mandatory section nine reporting to the council. We had zero uh, use of force, defensive actions. So that's good. We also had thirty arrests with forty-two total charges for September. We only had four emotionally disturbed person calls. And we had zero um, drug overdoses or suspected drug overdoses and zero Narcan incidents and zero OD deaths, which are good. Our body warm camera report from our supervisors, everything appeared normal, nothing to report on that. Also, for our quarter three traffic report, that the commissioner usually um, does, I completed because he's out. Um, we issued for quarter three traffic from July first to September thirtieth. HPD issued two-hundred-and-thirty-six traffic tickets during that line trend. I also completed a parking enforcement report because you guys wanted to know how many tickets we were were issued. So for Sep- September, it was two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen tickets were, uh, parking tickets were issued. Um, out of that amount, one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two were paid. Uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six of that was not paid and we booted six vehicles.
Does it say what the violations are, like, can you get parking?
I did, no, I didn't. I just um, just made it real simple. If you guys want to get more involved with that report, just tell me if you want more of that. I just kind of put down what you guys asked for last, thanks last meeting. So just a couple of things to report for September. For the Hudson City School District, uh, the superintendent of schools, HPD Chief Franklin, and our DA put out a report. In the beginning of school year, we had four incidences involving juveniles making serious threats to the school involving like shootings and that, that kind of weapons type of talk. So we had, or I had the detectives division uh, each case go through each one, go through the county attorney, the DA's office. No arrests were made, but each case was handled. Um, we also went to the Supreme Court with the matters, so we took it very seriously. They put out a joint letter with it, so it should have went out to all the parents. Just to make aware, you know, that that stuff is serious. We take it serious and we dealt with it. Hopefully, we uh, because we dealt with it, hopefully we won't have any more for the school year. Well. HPD, as you all probably know, I just have some notes here. The HPD Commissioner Bauer designed on October third. You guys are given a copy of this resignation letter. Um, Officer Kevin Kaiser was promoted from patrol to the rank of detective on October sixth. And we're happy for that because now our detectives division is full staff. Also for the e-bike stuff, we did a lot of uh, informational training and stuff. Senior Sergeant Nick Hodges what is in charge of that. So we had a, what he did, he's reached out to the state, so we were able to get pamphlets about the safety and the laws that he's been giving out to different events. Uh, recently, we went to the fire, and it's only had a, a event called the Dalmatian Day. And Sergeant Edelman was there giving out uh, information and, and giving information to people on e-boys and the safety of it. Also Sergeant Hodges will be attending the MC Smith uh, trunk, trunk or treating then on October twenty-fourth, and we will be doing the same there. September.
Basketball game next week, is it next week? Any, any amount of basketball game?
Yeah, I'll look into that. We didn't plan it, but let, let me look into that just happening. And September twenty-first, we had a child passenger safety seat check, an event at our local fire department up on Seventh Street. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Questions, Marv?
So as you know, the legal committee is looking at the bike and uh, scooter safety issues. Maybe like three approaches, one is education and so forth, uh, ultimately changing arguments and then enforcement. So we have seen like more presence in terms of, of police policing. Um, have you, at this point, have you just been giving people warnings or whatever when you see, you know, someone running in the light or whatever?
So the Lieutenant Kaiser, who is our patrol commander, put out an email to the guys to make sure, you know, make it a priority to stop these individuals uh, that they see and they happen, um, and doing that into it in addition to the education. So, yeah, both.
So I'll give you notification of our next legal committee meeting. It would be great if you'd come because we've divvied up the tasks and I think Gomik were doing education aspects. So if we could cut four nights so that we're all working in the same direction, that would be great. And I'll just send you an invitation.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Uh, so I'd like to know about the booting. How many uh, parking uh, tickets do you need uh, this, anyone that have in order to get?
I'm not sure. The parking uh, divisions, they know that number. I don't know it off the top of my head because I don't.
But it's not like with one or two.
No, no, no. It's, yeah, it's somewhere it's like six, five or six.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's usually pretty serious when they're getting to the point where they're booting a car on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Okay. Um, with the booting, you'll see there's a, this is first night, um, by Austin Booth, um, during the night. The hope with that is, is that that increases our booths uh, during the night. The city purchased two uh, booths years and years ago that are currently at DPW. Uh, I checked, they still have them. Um, so why guys are not writing parking tickets? Uh, if they come across a boardable vehicle instead of waking up a tow truck driver at three, four o'clock in the morning and writing wrongsiders. Um, this is to be able to have those guys put it on. And then they can go about their business. They don't have to sit there and wait for a tow truck, got a driver to come in for a half an hour. You know, whatever they need. And it's also gonna create revenue now for the parking bureau. Um, where before, we weren't getting any of the booting fee. That all went to the tow agencies. Um, we're starting to have the tow agencies boot during the day while our guys are busier um, handling police-related matters at night under just writing parking tickets. That was the point. We, we're gonna start with the two booths that we have. If it goes good, we see that we might need more, um, because we're now dead, getting that, being able to do it. Um, we'll address that when it comes. And the hope is, as well, um, that new technology that we're hoping to get, um, come January is also going to increase, uh, that being in the form of license plate readers for every uh, patrol vehicle, which is also an in-car camera. And then it doubles as, as a license plate reader. So it'll increase the transparency uh, for the police department with, um, you know, being able to see not just the body camera from the officer, but from the vehicle. And then we'll be able to put bootable vehicles into that same system, so it will read every single license plate on the street. If it's bootable, we can stop. If it's parked, we boot it. If it's moving, gives us a reason to say stop. Pay your parking tickets. If they pay them, we don't have to boot it. Um, but hopefully that'll continue to generate uh, the revenue. So we're hoping that come January, um, we can implement that program as well. So.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I should have asked this during the fire report. Um, this came up about lots of bad fireworks. Um, we would hope that maybe doing some educational thing ahead of time for, we would hope that you like fourth.
Right.
Apparently over the weekend, there were fireworks again in the city. Uh, and I'm wondering when.
Yep, that was, that was, that was sanctioned.
Good.
Um, they had to permit, they paid for the fire department to be there.
Good.
Um, that's part of their mass gathering. I think this was probably the fifth or sixth one that's been done. Um, but that was at the Basilica and that was sanctioned by the department.
That was my question.
Yep. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. Uh, Heather, are you ready to commence the technical report?
Uh, yes, I am. Let me just share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay, I cannot hear anybody. Are you frozen?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay. So same usual stuff, uh, building permits and fees. We continue to be substantially uh, under budget on both plumbing and building permits. Um, obviously, there were a number of projects that we thought would be further along than they were, uh, including one at least, which has now dropped off, uh, which is the second Galvin apartment building. Um, there's a number of uh, projects uh, still awaiting various formats in the planning board. Um, so I think it's highly unlikely at this point, we're going to make those numbers this year, unfortunately. Um, parking revenues, we're actually looking pretty good. If you look at them overall, we're at about sixty-seven percent of the year. Uh, eight out of uh, twelve months through, this data is all through August. And we're at sixty-eight percent uh, versus budget of our total revenue. And you can see it's relatively consistent across all, a little higher on the parking ticket and uh, parking and other permits fronts, a little lower on, on off-street parking. But overall, that number's looking solid or that category is looking pretty solid. Um, sales cannabis and mortgage and lodging tax. Um, again, uh, we're only two out of four of sales tax, but we're looking like we're trending pretty close to making our, our twenty-twenty-five budget number. So that's great. Uh, lodging taxes, we've discussed, um, is considerably lower than we would like to see, partially because again, some of the um, new businesses that we were anticipating being open have not opened yet, although the pocketbook factory, I believe, is taking reservations as of now, so that should start generating some uh, money. Um, but also because of some of the changes we put in place, we did see a pretty significant decrease in the amount of uh, registered uh, short-term rental folk, so that's clearly impacting that number as well. Uh, we've talked about cannabis last month. There's nothing new to add to that. Um, we will just have to wait and see what the next uh, payout or two comes into place, but right now it's looking like we're going to be a little sh- not a little, we're gonna be short on, on that as well versus budget. Mortgage tax, again, it's one of two payments. We really never know uh, what each semi-annual payment's gonna be. So it looks low now, but we could still make that number. Uh, we won't know until uh, very close to the end of the year, unfortunately. Um, in turn of financial reportings, we are still continuing to work on the twenty-twenty-four audit, uh, because we had to do both the regular audit and a single federal audit and a single DOT audit. Um, we ended up um, obviously taking a little longer than we had hoped. Uh, the single federal audit was supposed to be filed by September uh, thirtieth. The auditors were not able to make that happen, but I've communicated with um, OCR and explained to them the issue and um, the auditors have guaranteed to me and I have guaranteed in turn to OCR that uh, we will have that uh, the CIFA, which is a single expenditure federal audit, um, delivered to them no later than the end of this month. So it will only be a month late, which is um, you know, not ideal, but certainly not traumatic. Um, and I've already heard back from them saying that they'll let me know if they have any other issues. Um, operational, uh, again, you know, as you know, we've transferred over all of the different uh, tech packages regarding accounting, so tax collection, the finance package, which is the general ledger and the water and sewer billing thing. We are still trying to work through all of that. Um, some things are much better. Uh, some things are kind of shocking because it was supposed to be everything we had and more, and we're finding out in many cases, it's not everything we had and sometimes less. Um, we're having various uh, various levels of success depending on who we're working with in getting some of the uh, what we would consider even basic things. Uh, to be added into the software package. Um, you know, I, I think a basic example is we have people come in all the time and we have, you know, um, people from title search companies and lawyers from closings, and they want a basic statement of what's owed on a property. That doesn't actually exist or didn't actually exist until about three days ago. Don't know why, hard to believe that it didn't, but these are the kinds of things that we're dealing with. Second thing that we're dealing with is in New York State, according to New York State reporting, which you will be, you'll see both in the AFR, which is what we file with New York State, and in the audited financial statements, you'll see that there is not a thing called retain earnings or, or, you know, you don't make money in New York. It gets rolled into the fund balance at the end of the year. The new software doesn't do that. So at this point, I am physically required to go in, download all of this information and then do manual adjustments to approximately twenty-five different funds, just to get the numbers in the format they need to be in order to provide them to both New York State in their reporting system and to our auditors. Clearly not ideal, so we are um, basically begging them to see if they can modify that for us. Um, we did talk a little bit before about how um, there was a fair amount of time uh, spent uh, very unproductively in that they tried to implement utility billing before they implied the general ledger. It didn't work because they didn't have the basic things set up. They charged us for all the hours anyway. Um, I have gone through all of the invoices. I've determined how much time they and my office spent uh, as well as uh, DBW uh, staff in going through basically what was, you know, ultimately failed uh, setup and implementation. And I have made a request for them to give us a credit back on that. We will see how that goes. Um, depending on how it goes, you know, we may try and escalate it a little bit with the attorney, but right now we're hoping that that is not the case. Uh, as you all know, we're in the process of the twenty-twenty-six budget. We have all the departmental requests. We started the departmental BEA's reviews. They're all on the city calendar. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar with process, I just laid it out quickly here. The BEA has to provide the proposed budget to the council on it before November tenth. Then the mayor has to call a special meeting to present the budget to the council. It's the only thing that can be done during that meeting. Then there's a public hearing called by the mayor. We all have to be there, all the department heads, and it's obviously the opportunity for the public to come and comment on what they see. Um, and then there'd be a special meeting called by the county council to consider and vote on the budget. Uh, the council can reduce the budget, but it cannot increase the budget during that process at least. Um, and if it's not voted on within twenty days of the first meeting, it becomes accepted by default. Um, that's never happened, at least not in the time I've been here, but just technically, that's what it is. Uh, lodging tax, again, we're um, the money's coming in. I recorded it up earlier. We're still having some issues uh, on their reporting function because that software was upgraded as well. Um, not necessarily by our request. Um, so now that hopefully some of the other financial package and, and tax collection and utility billing software is at least now operational, we can get back to the lodging taxing and see if we can focus on that getting improved back to what we need it to be. Uh, foreclosures, uh, there was a resolution for a uh, alternative uh, installment agreement placed on your desk at the last meeting for ten percent down and thirty-six month pay versus twenty-five and twenty-four. Um, so we are of course waiting to see how you decide you vote on that. Um, Michelle Tulo actually, in the meantime, coordinated a meeting with representatives from Galvin Housing Resources. So we all met and sat together. They do sort of foreclosure counseling. They usually do it more associated with bank mortgages and less with delinquent taxes, but they uh, they wanted to be involved, so they're both going, we're gonna provide them with the list of the uh, people who are still on the uh, list. They are going to proactively send them a letter basically saying, hey, we know you're having some issues. We offer free foreclosure counseling and guidance. Um, so they're gonna do that. Um, once we know, um, if the alternative installment agreement has been approved by the council, we are going to issue a second demand letter, uh, so that'll be after the uh, formal meeting this month, obviously. Um, which will include both the letter, but also more specifics about the available either installment agreement or installment agreements. Um, as well as a brochure that Galvin Housing Resources is gonna provide us. So we're really trying to provide everybody with, you know, tools that they can use to make the best determination and decision for the situation they're in. And I think the um, I think the housing resources consulting will be uh, for, for the people that choose to take it, I think. for for the people that choose to take it, I think will be very valuable because they don't just look at it as, let's figure out how you can, you know, come up with this money because they're also very pragmatic and says, well, if you can't figure out how to come up with this money, what are other alternatives? Um, so again, that's, we're calling it a second demand letter, that's just being issued by the attorney. Um, right now, we are down to eighty parcels, um, with outstanding about three-point-two million dollars in taxes. We've redeemed, uh, sixty-eight properties, about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it's a little bit more because those were based on, um, the original amounts in the, um, original list, so there was obviously a couple more months of penalties, give or take, in that number, but, uh, forty-six percent of properties, but only twenty-three percent of dollars. So clearly, some of the really big ones that we've all been looking at have not responded in any way, shape or form, but at least two or three, uh, properties that owed in the low six figures did come in and did get themselves off the list, so that's great. Um, after we issue that list, we're gonna give them X amount of time, and then we're going to actually start, uh, ordering title searches, which is an expense that gets added to the property, so that has, you know, an impact. Um, and then we'll also finalize and file the list with the county clerk, uh, and begin the official proceedings of of going through the legal process and all of the communications that are required and the notifications. Um, in terms of resolutions, uh, I believe, uh, that, uh, Crystal Peck is working on a resolution to, for the sale of ninety-eight paddock place. You guys know that that has been around for years and years and be foreclosed on it. Then there was bankruptcy, then there was COVID, then the guy wouldn't get out, then the sheriff's office had so much work, they couldn't evict him for a while. It is now empty, it has been secured. Uh, obviously, we want to, uh, sell the property, and ideally, we want to sell it sooner rather than later, uh, if for no other reason than we don't want to have to incur the cost to winterize the house and protect it, uh, during the winter season. Um, I guess the the question aside from, do you want to sell it? The other question that the council will be, you know, wanting to think about is, do we sell it by auction or do we sell it by private sale? Um, private sale, obviously, we'd have to go out, we'd have to pay for an appraisal, then we'd have to figure out how to get the word out that that, uh, property's available for an auction. You don't have to get the appraisal, you still have to get the word out that a property is going to be auctioned off. Um, so, uh, I imagine you'll be having that conversation next week. Um, two other resolutions, uh, one super weird one. It's, it's, you're gonna see a budget transfer for twenty-twenty-four, um, which is very odd, but the reason why is because the auditors found a, this is in the sewer funds specifically, they found, um, an invoice that, uh, should have been charged back to twenty-twenty-four. It was missed, it was not, it was too high to, uh, what they call pass. If it's under a certain amount, they can just say, yeah, it's not ideal, but it doesn't really impact. It's about seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, the account that it should accurately be charged back to in twenty-twenty-four didn't have enough money to cover it, but there is enough money in other places in the sewer budget to cover it, so it'll be a simple, straightforward transfer. But I just want to explain that because obviously doing a budget transfer, you know, almost a year after the year's been closed is not usual. Uh, the other, the other one, uh, that you're gonna see, uh, which I will have, you know, in the next day or two, so I'm sorry I didn't have them for tonight, but I will have them well before, uh, next Tuesday's meeting, is just a budget amendment, uh, for the LOSAP, which is the, uh, service award program for the firefighters. We got the, um, basically the the invoice for the twenty-twenty-five cost, and it exceeded what we had actually budgeted by about seven thousand. Um, that means it pretty much exceeded what we had been, uh, experiencing by about seven thousand because it had been pretty flat up until this point. Um, so that, I believe, is all I have. Oh, no, I don't, I'm sorry. Sidewalk Improvement District, um, successfully added to the assessment roll. We have touched base with the, uh, the software company to determine how they're going to be added to the bill, and then once they're added to the bill, how it's gonna be recorded and captured in the GLs that get paid. Um, there are some open questions, and I'm frankly not sure who's supposed to make these decisions, whether it's me or whether the council should revisit the law in the very near future. But the first thing is, um, when should that fee be paid, when it gets put on the tax bill? And I'll give you an ex- I'll give you examples, so city and county taxes, it's four quarters. Uh, sorry, city taxes are four quarters, county is every other quarter. The water sewer, the water re-levy is the first or the second quarter. The sewer re-levy is the first or the second quarter, so those are all codified. Um, so at some point, we're going, in the very near future, we're gonna have to determine when that SID fee, what due date they should have for that SID fee. Uh, the second issue is, when is the SID fund supposed to recognize the revenues? So, you know, and the two basic options are, do they get it as it's received? So as we collect it, and we collect it every month, at the end of the month, do we then say, okay, let's move it out of the general fund or or let's move it into the SID fund? Or do we say that, hey, we build three-hundred-thousand dollars of SID funds, we're gonna make SID whole as of beginning of the year, and then we're just gonna select it as we go on, which is what we do for the water sewer re-levy. But obviously, that has a negative impact on cash flow for the general fund. Um, and then the last thing is, we also need to determine a payback schedule for the inter-fund loan, which is what allowed the SID, uh, to kick off without actually having any revenue. Um, my understanding is the revenue estimate is gonna be about three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. So if we assumed even a three-year payback, which is, you know, kinda long, that that's still half of the revenue, so that's obviously gonna impact how much revenue is left to actually do sidewalk improvements during the period of time that the loan is being paid back. And then obviously, once the loan is paid back, the revenue is is a hundred percent to SID. Um, the only other sort of new news is that, um, we do have a date to close on the EFC financing, which is for the first phase of that major sewer, uh, project. So the first phase alone is a sixty-six-million-dollar project, which is, um, looking like it's gonna end to about fifteen-million dollars because of grants, but even fifteen-million dollars, I just wanna give people an FYI, we're talking, you know, a couple years from now, probably. I don't think we're gonna start in twenty-twenty-six collecting for this, but we might want to start to ramp it up. The debt service is gonna be over a half-a-million dollars a year, and you have to put that in perspective with right now, total sewer revenue is only one-and-a-half-billion dollars a year. So that's gonna be a big, um, a big expense that's going to have to be covered. Um, so I just want people to sort of be aware of that now because obviously that's gonna impact, uh, water sewer bill rates and leachate rates and other things like that. And that's all gonna have to be figured out. Um, uh, on the plus side, uh, we did file the application for the sewer debt exclusion. Um, it was received, it was acknowledged, the public notice happened, and the affidavit of public notice has been forwarded to, uh, EFC as of today. Uh, so that's proceeding well, and that's important because basically it allows the city to borrow. It 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 sounds exactly what it is. When we're looking at, there's a constitutional debt limit, you're only allowed to borrow so much money relative to basically how much revenue you bring in. What this does is it lets, it lets us say, hey, we don't have to count the sewer debt toward that, so it gives us more flexibility in our borrowing, so it's actually pretty important. Um, and that's it. Uh, this last part of foreclosure proceedings, I think I just didn't delete, um, because it's a, an older version of what I covered earlier, so apologies for that. And that's it.
Council members.
Really? Historically, does the city, um, make more, uh, money selling, uh, foreclosed property, uh, via, um, auctioning or, um, with, um, privately?
We haven't sold enough properties in my time for me to be able to answer that, but you you, you know, unless somebody's really jonesing for the property, I would say probably an auction can, an auction because it it generates, you know, competitive bidding.
So Heather, when when you say the revenues only we can give back, the taxes, any penalties, and anything up above goes to the homeowner, correct?
That is correct, as of twenty-twenty-three. Yep. Oh, I did have, uh, apropos not of this topic, but just because I'm thinking about it. Um, I believe for the fire truck, I believe we got two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for it. And just as a reminder, there was a resolution that authorized the sale that also indicated that those funds would be set aside to put against the cost of the ladder truck that we're assuming we're going to get in twenty-twenty-six. So it's just a little follow-up on that.
I understand, girls. Robert? I'm online. Hey, it's Rob, are you with us? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, I am. So, let me do my feature here. How'd it go? All right. What's going on? All right, we're going to share the window. Two, uh, okay. You'll be happy to hear, we have a DPW double feature tonight. Uh, I was away during September, so, uh, right now, we're gonna recap what was presented back in September. Um, uh, septic revenue was fifty-five-thousand dollars in July. Um, the installation of the new bar screen at the headworks of the sewer plant was put and put online, there's new control systems, electrical connections made. There's a new actuator, which is what you're seeing there, that basically tells, um, it's like a automatic for like a hose, it tells the hose when to turn on and when to turn off when flow is needed and when it's not needed. Um, there's an electrical connection box, it looks like you would see in anybody's house or whatever. Uh, obviously, it's not acceptable in a, uh, in a headworks building because we operate under different rules and codes. The principal issue is that it's, uh, everything has to be explosion-proof, and because, I mean, these have to be sealed with gaskets and special fittings, so that way there's no chance of a spark because there is an explosion, um, risk with sewage. Part of it is because somebody could dump something illegally in there, like a petroleum product. The other part is the natural breakdown process of, um, sewage creates hydrogen, phosphine, hydrogen sulfide, and methane, which are all explosive. So, um, that was switched out and ready to go. The bar screen operational, you can see that this was, the old one was all jammed up with grit. Uh, that is what comes from the inside of our collection system when we have heavy rains, uh, with the bar screen up and running, the grid is where it's supposed to be, not at the bottom of the pit, but in the dumpster to be hauled off. We, um, this is, uh, next to the sewer plant, this is, um, one of the outfalls that goes along the the fence line by the Fugari. It's been repaired a couple times, the seals come apart again, creating this massive void. Um, so we just have to replace sections of pipe. Before we do that, we were required to get a, uh, wetland general permit from DEC. So we have to go through that process first. Uh, the fire department was, uh, able to assist us with locating the actual outfall out in the Hudson River, so you, uh, the buoy, I believe, is where the diver is, and it's somewhere between this, uh, buoy and the and the bridge is where they, the trestle is where they located it, marked it for us, and we were able to provide that information to DEC. Uh, and that's all going to be taken into consideration with our upgraded speedies permit. Um, that's been in, uh, ongoing for about a decade or so. Uh, we did have our annual inspection of the sewer plant, uh, there's our overall rating is satisfactory. Uh, moving to water, you know, there was an issue of a overdosage of polymer in one of the filters, uh, created, uh, basically a, a restriction and, uh, which created an increase in pressure and blew one of the fittings off. Uh, you know, the fitting was replaced, it shows you what kind of pressures there. Uh, you know, the polymer was cleaned out, uh, everything was put back in working order, all set. Uh, you all can remember, there was a, a fire on Warren Street back in, uh, August or September, I don't remember which one. And, um, you know, one of the things that we do is, you know, we wanna make sure that all the hydrants are operational, so here you've got Seventh and Warren, um, Mrs. Park, uh, across from, uh, Prison Alley. Uh, number fourteen is by the old Ackerman's Building at the corner of Eighth. So, you know, these are all, you know, all the hydrants are operational. The one down here by Park and Warren, that was tagged by our, um, our good friends and neighbors at the Athens Fire Department. Uh, we had to have the water department there to shut the hydrant down so that way they could remove their, um, I believe was some kind of an adapter. And, uh, I asked one of the firefighters, because I know next to nothing about fire matics, about this water coming out the front of the truck, and they said that that's a relief, I guess, because the tank is full. So, uh, you know, water for the hoses and too much for the trucks, uh, that's, that's the way we like it at the water department. The, because we had done hydrant flushing a week before, a lot of times when there's a, an incident like this, you'll see a lot of complaints of people with discolored water just because it's so much volume, it's so quick a time, it's so localized, will create disturbances. Uh, but because we did flushing the week before, we had zero complaints, uh, following the, following the event. Um, sewer pair on, uh, Fifth and Long Alley, and just, you know, a lot of maintenance going on, a lot of storm-related damage getting, getting fixed, so that's the final restoration there. Uh, we had a similar one down on, down in the Lower Cherry Alley, and when we were there, um, excavating it, we found, uh, a buried tank, it was a thousand-gallon fuel tank. And so here's the stone sewer that we were there to fix, and this is the fuel tank. Now, you know, there, there's a section of fuel tanks in the charter, and it references, you know, honor before September first of nineteen-twenty-eight. So, you know, there's never been a, a, a tank that was installed in the city right away since in my tenure, and I doubt it's been for a very, very many, many years. But the tanks are still there, abandoned. Um, you know, unlike most sections of the code that say the abiding, uh, neighbor, this section says whoever the permittee was, and we have, no, I, there's no records of any permitted underground storage tanks or fuel tanks. So, uh, you know, we've been down this road with DEC before. You know, we can say, you know, we don't wanna do it, it's not our tank, we didn't use it, and DEC can say, that's great, they issue us a consent order with or without fines, and we're compelled to do it anyway. So in this instance, we bring a crew in who does the dismantling of the tank, pumps out any of the material. Um, we have a special contractor that we put any of the contaminated soil in, and that gets hauled off, we had Crawford there to do all the monitoring and prepare the closeout. So when it's all said and done, this is gonna be a, uh, probably a twenty-thousand-dollar cleanup. You know, we'll, you know, there'll be a transfer, uh, this month to cover those bills, but, uh, this is what happens, you know, it's in the roadway, DEC says it's your road, your property, it's your problem. And, uh, so it's, it's over with, it's, uh, it's all taken care of now. So there was a, a thing from DEC about some algal blooms, and, uh, you know, there was a article in the, the paper about it. These are just, these are water chestnuts, I just wanna make sure that we understood what we're talking about. I'm not sure what this kind of phlegm is that's here, uh, but algal blooms are brightly colored, so, uh, they're very distinct, and, uh, you know, they could be green, they could be red, they could be uh, any number of colors, but they're usually pretty, pretty colorful. Um, there was a bit of a, oh, no, we had CSC tree. So this is a, a tree that was from something along the Erie Canal, and about two-hundred trees were planted, so one was decided to go up here. Uh, there's the locates and site. Um, there was a little bit of a kerfuffle online last month about, you know, the new lawn area by the, uh, the Streetscape Project, and, uh, you know, we informed the terrorists that, you know, the, uh, per the code, section eighty-two dash two, you know, the butter is responsible to mow the lawn to the curb, uh, which, uh, they did, and there was no problem, and problem solved. Um, as for the flowers and such, that's not included in the code, so, uh, you know, the Parks Crew of the DBW will be managing the, the, uh, flowers and trees and shrubs, um, and, you know, for the foreseeable future. Um, there is, oh, and, you know, we've had certainly our issues and our debates with, uh, Department of State about, you know, keeping the contract schedules and so forth, uh, this here, this was, this was mulch that was washed out, and the Parks guys, uh, went and replaced the mulch. And, you know, Glens Falls was a, around one, we were a round-two winner. Glens Falls was the, one of the first awardees, was in the first round of awardees, and this is- And this is, you know, taken from a South Street project last month. You know, they're, they're just breaking ground and doing form work. So, you know, we're a little surprised at why everything's such a big deal for us, you know, being late by a couple of months. Moving on to the October portion of today's program. So just on August revenue was $46,870. The, these are aeration tanks, which have been out of service for a number of years. But they still could be used in the treatment process, they just aren't. And there was a sizable amount of vegetation was in there, the guys went down, cut it, removed it. And then everything was cleaned out, so that way if we do need it, it is available. We have the pump station upgrades that took place about five years ago. And so DEC has been honest about whether or not there's any overflows after a couple of years. There's no overflow, so they basically wanted these overflows cut and capped. So picture three shows the overflow filled with concrete. And at picture four, this is where it was basically PVC pipe, we put a cap on it. And so now they can't overflow. So when we do our BMP report for the end of the year, we'll be closing two CSOs. The greatest way to limit the number of CSOs is to eliminate the physical connection altogether. So they'll be removed in the next year's submission. We also have Water Department, we had a health, the state health department inspection. And so one of their concerns was that, you know, calibration of our turbidity meters, turbidometers, sorry. Little metal prop, anyway, the, so here's transfer upgrade. Turbidometers are basically something that manages the, monitors the clarity of the water. There's very specific tolerances of how clear it can be. And calibration involves, you know, preset control samples that are put in the analyzer. And, you know, whatever the analyzer sees should match the numbers on the caps. And everything was, was fine with all six of those. You know, we, we have a dry season. So even out of the forge, you know, water was barely going over the spillway. But, you know, we're still getting a full pipe of water to the reservoir. And water was still going over the reservoir. So it certainly, you know, wasn't optimal conditions, but, you know, there was no point when we were necessarily in an emergency situation. We did send our lead copper samples off. A couple of months ago, we received the results. The lead copper samples are performed by 20 individual residents throughout the city. They're each given a sample bottle with specific instructions of how to perform the sample. And what's happened is for the lead, 18 of 20 or 90% of the samples came back non-detect. Of the two samples that did have a detection, the highest was .002.9. The action level was .015. So, you know, you're basically looking at something of one-fifth of the action level. So nowhere, not one sample was nowhere near where an action level take place. So that's to be expected, because we do corrosion control and inhibition in the treatment of the process, of the treatment process, sorry. For copper, we also had trace amounts, the highest amount was one-tenth of action level. You know, recently, there was a, a discussion online about the backup water supply and the colorous release. Just to kind of clarify, you know, the actual face value is $200,000 a year for the first 30 years. That started in 2005, that goes to 2034. After that, for the next 10 years, it's $100,000 a year, that will be from 20, 2020, 2035 to 2044. So the face value of it is $7 million. Now, you, you can debate whether $7 million was enough or not enough. You can certainly consider time and value of money, and that when the deal was struck, that, you know, the, you know, the structured payment over time is less than getting the money upfront. But you cannot debate the actual amount of the transaction. $7 million is the amount, and there's really nothing more to talk about on that matter. The, you know, and about the backup, so this gives you a kind of an aerial of, this is the 40 acres, this is our quarry. You know, they ended up, you know, it really must have been like manna from heaven when the, when there's probably, I mean, obviously it wasn't the fact that it was an economic, you know, shock to the system. But to have a body of water that was so close to a pre-existing pump station, the pump station was actually built in the 1940s, with the intent of either creating more flow from the reservoir and/or sucking water directly from the Claver Creek. So, you know, this is, was an eligible water supply that was relatively close. The issue is that when this was put in place in 1960, 69, 97, we had an open sand filter up at the reservoir. So the pumps turned on, maybe it would make a little fountain in the middle, maybe it wouldn't. But the reality was, it was open-ended. So there was, you know, the pumps could do, deliver the 3 million gallons per day of water with, you know, not affecting anything. The issue is that in 2005, when the new plant came online, the plant is designed to control inflow, it has no way to deal with excess incoming flow. So there's a huge valve that holds back the flow, it's holding back the reservoir right now as we speak. The issue is that these pumps are designed to do 3 million gallons a day, and the water that we're drawing is a million to a million four gallons a day. So it would deliver two to three times the volume needed, which would then put massive amounts of pressure, excuse me, on a 100-year-old transmission main between Spruak Road and the plant, which would undoubtedly burst the, the pipe and its fittings. So we do have this supply there, I've kind of, you know, made an analogy that it's, you know, it's like the, a backup water supply without using any valves. It does provide water theoretically, but in all practicality, right now, it, it doesn't. You know, we would need to do some, some serious mechanical upgrades at the pump station. These weren't taken into, there was a million dollar upgrade of the pump station during the plant upgrade, but there are some throttling valves. But based on what we know of the pressures, you know, there's going to definitely be more damage than, than good. So just kind of like giving you an idea that it is a source of water, but it's not a very good source. And, you know, in the event that there's an issue at the plant, you know, this doesn't do anything. Or if there's a break in the line by the county highway garage, this doesn't do anything. So we probably need a more comprehensive solution. To go into DPW, this, we had some, some surging up in the Union Street area. And so we brought a camera in, the camera was able to identify pieces of sections that were missing and collapses. So, you know, this was the camera, this is actually tile that was from a suction upstream, and got washed down during the flows. So we cut that section out, removed all the pieces and replaced it. Similar issue upstream where it was a massive void. So we uncovered this very old cleanout. I would assume they would have put a spoon down in there and scooped up god knows what. But it's a 12-inch cleanout. And, you know, it had a structure that all had to be demoed, at which point that we exposed the damaged sewer, and everything was replaced there. And up by Hudson Avenue, there was that ma- massive tree that was there forever. The portion of this picture that's not reflective is a 10-inch diameter root that had come from that tree. So now we have an idea of why it was so large, it was at a, you know, a constant supply of, you know, fortified water. If you're a tree, it's good. So, and this is the repair to that. This, I talked about the CAC tree, this is the excavation, the final product. And, you know, just to give you an idea, because it's the budget season, you know, we have to bid salt a year in advance. So, you know, the price, which was managed through Office of General Services at the state, $69 a ton. 800 ton is $55,000. We are not, you know, this is not an invoice, we're not responsible to take all 800 ton. We are responsible to take 400 ton of it, so that's 27,000. But the lock-in also allows us to go over 100%, up to 120, 130% with only nominal increases, but it guarantees supply. And as far as Berry Street Bridge, we're doing our closeout paperwork with them. One of the things the council did over the many years was provide money for design review by the railroads. So when the engineers designed it, the railroads had to sign off on it. And we also needed force account money, which was for the flaggers, flagging the trains during construction. We had to give $375,000 for flaggers, $150,000 for design review. At the end of the project, we still have $199,000 in the flagger force account money and $106,000. So we are expecting two checks from Amtrak in the amount of $305,000 to return what was essentially in an escrow account. My understanding is that since the project started with a $600,000 loan from the Capital Reserve Fund from the council, it would probably go back to that. And that's it.
Well, thank you, Rob.
Okay.
Councilmen have questions. Public?
Floyd.
I'm listening, so good to see you.
Thank you.
Rob, do you have any insight or, or awareness of what's going to happen with these new sewage projects? And in the review, and who's wearing that, and what we could expect to see the streets being dug up?
If you're talking about the capital project, the $66 million one, the first pro, the first project is in, we broke it down into two separate projects. The first one is in design right now. We, also, once we're through the design phase, which will probably be early winter, everything has to go to DEC for their review and approval. Once that's done and we have their concurrence, then we'll put the bid on the streets, which is probably be March, April-ish. We'll put it on the streets, because it's state and federal money, requires a minimum of 30 days. Bid opening will probably be April, May, with contract to begin in the summer of 20, next summer, 2026.
Thank you, sir, I always appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
I think it's a good, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Okay, we have some resolutions, and since I know a lot of you here are specific resolution, we'll throw them down first. Logan, can you throw the resolution number three? Can I get an introduction in a second of the resolution calling on New York State? Castle discussion?
Do we have any information from the Controller's Office about how those bonds are used? I know that you have, about how the bonds are used, how the money is used.
I didn't get any information from both controllers, but I know almost 90%, 98% of the, from what I've researched, that 98% of the bond is used towards idea.
Is that information that you could share with us, the source of that data? Like, it'd be helpful.
That I looked it up back to when the ceasefire was going on, I'll look it up.
Correct the resolution, the bonds are unrestricted.
Excuse me?
The bonds are unrestricted.
But I'm just curious about, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how it's used and so on. And I'd just like to see the information, that's all.
I made a call to Senator Keith Soffe, office to inquire if they, I'm familiar with this resolution. Or, so I want to know exactly, you know, what, what else is, you know, being utilized too, that we could address other questionable bonds that we address now, rather than six months from now. So I also want to close in to Senator Jill Brandt and Schumer to see exactly where, what they can do to trouble down the information of these funds and other funds that are questioned.
Thank you. Did anyone get back to me?
You're funny.
Impressive, I just think.
Well, I think the government shutdown, I don't think they're going to get back to me, but H.G. says she'll get back to me.
It's a different government.
Okay.
I think it's around 50% of the New York State pension funds goes towards the Israeli bonds. And which is approximately $350 million, if you may. It's a lot.
I, I recommend everyone, you know, on top of me calling, everybody else calling, to, you know, rattle their cage a little bit, that we're, you know, looking at this or paying attention. Because $350 million, a lot of, a lot of money that could, you know, make or break a decision somewhere.
I'm pretty sure that's the idea of this resolution, this is going to go to the controller, right? Instead of us, each one of us calling, that's the idea.
It goes to the senators, it goes to the controller, it goes to our congressman, it goes to our governor, our general, our local senator, three senators, the senator, but including one correspondent, right? All right, okay. That we receive, the correspondents received the email, they're going to be part of this resolution and packet to be sent.
If you want us to, we could do that.
Yes, I'd say more people, the better, that are so that are paying attention and want some.
They're all trying to record, so we can include the record, yes. I just don't think you would like to speak to this. Before I open the floor, is there anybody who is against this resolution here tonight? Or online? Okay, so assuming that you're more or less speaking to the choir for, why don't you try to perhaps tell us something that's not in the resolution, and why we should support it? Is there anybody who wants to speak? Probably, I suppose.
Okay.
My name is Tamara Belopowski, and I'm a resident of Ward 3 in Hudson. And I stand here tonight with immense sadness at the thought of the hundreds of thousands of dollars of New York State funds that have been loaned to the government of Israel. A government that runs an apartheid system that dehumanizes, tortures, starves, and murders innocent Palestinians. Comptroller DeNapoli manages the New York State Pension Fund, which is one of the top US investors in Israel bonds. These bonds provide unrestricted funds for the Israeli government and military. As of March 2024, the New York State Common Retirement Fund held over $352 million worth of Israel bonds. It's loans that go directly to the Israeli treasury with no guardrails, providing financial support for Israel's apartheid system and ethnic cleansing campaign. The recent ceasefire announcement and exchange of hostages does not change the fact that Israel's prime minister is wanted by the International Criminal Court for war crimes and crimes against humanity, or that the UN has classified Israel's actions as genocide. New York State should not support any regime like that, even with a single dollar. In the face of such blatant displays of inhumanity, it is up to our local communities to band together and take a stand for humanity. We must stand up for the rights of our neighbors around the world. The comptroller needs to hear from our community and stop playing politics with our pensions. DeNapoli purchased over 100 million in Israel bonds after October 7th, 2023. He needs to halt any further purchases and opt not to reinvest current loans back into Israel. I ask the council to vote yes to pass the resolution calling on the New York State comptroller to stop purchasing Israel bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize, Mr. Had, I misspoke, screwed up my reading, and I said preaching to the choir, not speaking to the choir. Deputy said, anyone else like to speak? Sure.
As a rabbi, and one has just over the border, a daily visitor to Hudson, I'm writing to ask you to support the proposed resolution. In 1926, my great-grandfather was sent from Warsaw to Jerusalem to found First Geshiba, the Garifasitic community, and then British Mandate Palestine, who later go on to win the Israel Prize for his Encyclopedia of Biblical Commentary. My grandmother was born there, my grandparents fought in the War of Independence, the Nakba. My grandfather lost his leg, I was raised in Jewish dying of schools and have been to Israel, Palestine countless times. The genocide of Gaza over the last two years has awakened so much of the world to the injustices of Palestine that have been allowed to continue until now on account of a strange soup of colonialism, Holocaust, guilt, white supremacy, Christian Zionism, Jewish exceptionalism, and so forth. The confluence of the Holocaust and the founding of the state of Israel made for an impossible vortex of trauma in time. There was not enough time, will, sources to process the enormity of the Holocaust. The Jewish communities of Europe oppressed for thousands of years for the sake of their own safety made a devil's bargain with colonial powers to steal Palestinian land from made a devil's bargain with colonial powers to steal Palestinian land from those who attended its soil for unceasing generations, trading their safety for another group's oppression. The Jewish community is still trapped in fear and trauma and is willing to perpetuate occupation, apartheid, genocide for the sake of this delusional vision of Jewish safety, which comes at the expense of brutal, horrific violence inflicted on the Palestinian people. Sometimes when a person is so trapped within the nets of their own suffering, they need a friend to pull them out and walk them away from the wreckage. Divesting from Israel bonds is an act of care and compassion towards all people, Palestinians, Jews, and New Yorkers. It says to each of our communities that we long for places of safety not conditional on the circumstances of one's birth. By investing our dollars in systems of care and justice near and far, we send a message to everyone that it's possible to create a bonus of safety, not conditioned on oppression. Many of our ancestors did not learn these lessons, nor did they have the resources that we have. Greater understanding of systems of oppression and the need to take responsibility for the injustices we perpetuate, even from a distance. It's on us to create safer, more inclusive communities for the children all over the world. I urge you to vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. Um, brief comment, um, you know, resolutions like this were accused by our critics of virtue signaling and such accusations. But it'd be clear that this resolution actually speaks to something very directly that we're involved in. Many of us are in this um, uh, pension, thank you, in a pension. So it is directly related to people here in Hudson. Anyone else?
My name is Bishop, I'm a resident of Pittford. And uh, you know, we've tried to meet with De Napoli, tried to communicate with him, he either not answer questions or respond. Um, I think there were some tens of millions of bonds that were renewed in May, but his office would not either confirm or deny whether they were actually renewed. They came up, you know, so we cannot get any real information about what his attitudes are of when he's planning.
Thank you. Again, as you might not know, since you're not all regulars here, we don't actually vote on this, uh, we're voting on this next uh week. Um, but I sense that we're gonna pass it. Um, but you're welcome back this week again if there's new developments. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, Lloyd.
I mean, I just think wars are a distinct thing. And this is just one example of humanity throughout the world, that humanity perpetuates devastation towards one another. So it would be great if we all weren't part of this, we all are part of this endeavor. Destroy each other. And first, if you want to boil the office, you should be able to get that information for a boil.
People have, well, please.
Yeah, that's all I have to say. I'm just not a fan of war. In general.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, yes, sir.
Um, I don't have much to add, but my name is Noah Wertz, and I'm a resident of the first ward. Um, when I learned that the New York State Pension Fund is one of the top U.S. investors in Israeli bonds, I was disturbed. Bonds may sound like a benign financial investment, but in reality, the money acts as unrestricted funds for the Israeli government's military. And over the past years, we've seen exactly what this no questions asked funding has led to. Past, they spent deliberate starvation nearly half a million people, and ultimately, according to the United Nations, the genocide of the Palestinian people. Uh, I'm here out of a sense of common decency, which I hope will be shared by the council members. Uh, when Hudson passed a ceasefire resolution last year, I felt proud to be part of a community that had voted its conscience in a cynical political climate. And I think the time has come again for the city of Hudson to be a voice of moral leadership. And so I call on Hudson, uh, the representatives of the first ward and Hudson's common council to vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have a lot more business to do, uh, to join our agenda. But you're welcome back next week when we vote on it. I guess we'll move on. So, the first is resolution, the last is ending. Get back. Stay for the real, stay.
You can be fine anywhere.
Okay, first resolution, pointing to the national, and introduction in a second, Dylan and?
I can, yeah.
Dylan and?
Um, personal service, great, so, they like come down to see.
Next resolution.
What is this one?
Uh, this is, this makes just the, um.
Oh, the idiot. So he apparently is, this is a real point, not.
Right, this is, uh, introduction in a second.
You know, and Dylan.
Uh, Lloyd, can you give that a minute?
Yes, sir.
The next is also about the, maybe two projects or a time. Seeker type two. Crystal, quick explanation of seeker type two, perhaps?
Sure, type two is a type of.
What would you have here, you, bro?
Hold that thought. Is that better at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, so a type-two action under seeker is one that has already been determined by New York State Legislature, it's in the statute, that it will not have, the action will not have a significant impact on the environment, so no further review is required.
Okay, thank you. Can I get an introduction in a second, Dylan and?
Yes.
The next um resolution, uh, it's a budget amendment to uh apply the grant writing services for the idiot project to the, um, protocol's, um.
S I D.
S I D, by local improvement. Can I have introduction in a second? Dylan? Yes, sir. Next resolution, Department of Transit transfer, let's see, we're transferring money from their U personnel service to their late and late. reintroduction in a second please. Shoshah, um? Well? Now, the Department of Transfer, uh, hopefully our personnel service to, to the general U personnel service. Introduction in a second please.
Why is, what is this about? So it's coming out of, um.
Coming out of. Yes. I saw some ads, yoga and.
Those to pay the Caesar workers, okay.
I'm on the deep, of course.
The next resolution um is uh regarding the uh determination of environmental significance under seeker for the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan. An introduction in a second please. Dylan and? Next resolution authorizes, oh, we can discuss this, but let me get an introduction in a second first. This authorizes the sale of a place at a public auction to the highest bidder. One? And? Yeah. I'll just say that, in my experience, having done this before, the auctions do.
Say again?
The auctions do bring us.
So how do we advertise it?
Uh, we put it up everywhere we can, leading on, we send to the local real estate board and.
And why don't we start with one eighty-eight?
Because that's the actual amount that is owed.
It's the minimum. It has to cover.
That's what their taxes, yeah.
We can't do any higher, no?
Actually, this one, still hard, huh? Goes higher, I understand. We don't still market that money.
Do we have any idea what the, what the market value of that house is?
Uh, no, but I think we'll find out.
We have to do an assessment of that.
I mean, it's not like appraisal, I mean, no.
We don't have to do an appraisal unless we're selling it.
No, I'm saying, do you find out the background?
I'm just saying, does anyone have any sense of much, what it's market value?
I mean, I'm too clueless, I think.
Uh, please sit up there and join my side.
Yeah. I don't know what's the condition of the house. Do you know?
Sure, I can.
I don't know what's the condition of the house.
Yeah.
Do we know? There's a house across the street from me that is nearly falling down because it's been abandoned for five years. No one will do anything about it. But whatever, that one's going for three fifty.
We don't, we don't get any money, yeah, so.
So what is the matter? Covers our, the whole point is, the only thing we even get is the minimum, we don't really care what.
Exactly, and, and Andy Howard will, will conduct the auction, and previously, they've been well attended, they, they get, you know, the door in place, for the most part.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, next we have, President to adopt the comprehensive plan, and have an introduction in a second. Shoshah? And Dylan? After having had to, uh, go look hearing, this is finally authorizing the discontinuance of Long Alley, that property over there on uh, state, top of state and the state of Columbia, you know where it's from.
Yeah.
Uh, there was someone. Danny and?
Well, there was somebody here with a map or anything.
I think there is a map, if you don't.
No, I mean, somebody was here with like a big poster and a map when I was coming in, but he must have left.
There it is.
Yeah, well, just like.
The next, we'll, we'll be voting on, I mean, we did come to a price agreement, and we'll be voting on that, I assume, next one. The next resolution authorizes the complete furniture by vehicle immobilized vehicles. For those who don't know, that's a boot. Dylan and Jennifer.
This bootage.
And the next, the resolution, um, police department authorizes towing services within the city of Hudson, the feeding cycle. Dylan and?
Didn't we already, oh, we already have this on the books, didn't we vote on this like a year ago? When we talked.
If I may, you voted on the law that set the tow regulations, but it did not, there's a separate resolution that needs to set tow fees, and that was something that was being worked on with the police department.
Okay, thank you. And the last resolution, um, is needed for the C P B, the grant, oh, no, the, 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 the Hudson community, the, the, the designation of a fair housing officer. The mayor is already, that's major terror, but this is, uh, they need a, a designation from us. Can I have an introduction in a second?
So this is another one, she is currently a fair housing.
Right, this is the same thing.
But is this a rule?
No, it just has to be done through the council as well.
I see. And is there some reason why Michelle is going to occupy that role?
Yeah.
What is the difference between, why do we need an additional fair housing that we need?
It's a big question.
Michelle is, has jumped out there, I mean, I think it's redundant.
I think because that was put in as part of the charter, the fair housing officer, like commissioner. Oh. As, as she gets a thousand strikers, just like a commissioner at least.
I see. And so, so this pre-existed, uh, Michelle's position for, for through the grant.
It's, it's the Hudson's version of Phil Fisher on the county level, it's Hudson's version of fair housing office.
So what do they do exactly? What do, I mean, what's the?
If your complaints, I mean, we're.
Complaints about what?
About housing issues, you know, rentals and.
Unfair, unfair, uh, you know, landlords' rates, reasonable accommodations, um, you know, evictions, uh, things like that.
Do we have them in record the last years?
Prefer people who contact me about renovations.
Okay.
So.
I'm just saying, I wonder what the complaints are. Are they accessible for the public to see them?
Yeah, I think, I probably not, it's still things, you know, are protected, you know, because that's, but I'm not, I'm not certain.
I, I just want to see about this good cause, uh, if they.
If it goes to court, eviction is public record, only if it goes to court, right? So prior to, I don't know if any kind of council from the fair housing officer is open government in terms of assistance, until it goes into the public domain, like, like addiction court or something, then it is open, you know, it's a public review. You can even go to addiction court, uh, to watch it, so, but, uh, until it goes there, I think Teresa and Bill work together, I sit on board with them. So we meet, um, twice, twice, every two months, I think, on the Housing Advisory Board of the County. So we go over all the, um, issues of evictions or, or whatever complaints have come through, city and county. So we sit on the board to review how to handle them and approach them.
There you have, uh, I, I, I know there are hands up, but I didn't get any of this. Um, introduction in a second.
It might be, no?
Sorry?
I thought we were, I thought we were ready.
I, you know, everything goes, I'm not really did, so you couldn't get it, could you?
Oh, okay.
Sure, extend a second.
No, not this one.
Dylan and?
Very.
So, can I ask one more question? So, um, is there any conflict with having Teresa in this role as well as chair of the planning board? Do you see any issue with that?
No, there's, there's a conflict, because it's not on the, just like Randall's is on I A, and, and, and also on, as supervisor, because those positions in the charter are not designated, because Teresa came after the fact, it was never put on the charter that as a chair of a planning board, that you cannot hold another position.
Yeah.
Some positions are, but that hasn't been updated on the charter, where, uh, they can't, it's, it's not, uh, concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I'm wondering, we used to get reports from adult control officer, and I'm wondering whatever happened to that, because, you know, I, I'm hearing some complaints and, 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 and.
Wait, you know, four years, I don't remember any.
We used to get him monthly.
What?
Yeah, we used to, yeah, absolutely, when he first started.
But the last four years hasn't happened.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, we used to get him when he first started, he used to, yeah, weekly, a monthly report from the adult officer. And it used to be given to, uh, Tracy.
Calls and.
The city clerk, yeah, right, how many tickets, they're, they're.
I will follow up on that with our dog office. Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? That's it? You're not on the line? Okay. What could take your, little second? I was a favorite, you can say that.
Right.